Here.
Ms. Carisola.
Here.
Mr. Carr, oh, Ms. Carr, sorry.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Mr. Hayward.
Here.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Ms. Rundell.
Here.
Dr. Robinson.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Mr. Corey, are you able to lead us in the flag salute?
By the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. From adequate notice of meeting in accordance with PL 1975, Chapter 231, notice of tonight's meeting was mailed to the record and the Ridgewood News on January 9, 2024. Notice of this meeting was also mailed to the borough clerk and was posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education Office in the Administration Building on the same date. Ms. Calvez, are you able to read the mission statement, please?
The Glen Rock School District founded on principles of education in partnership with the supportive community provides an exceptional education to all students to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens.
Thank you very much. And do we have a, anything? Okay. So I do see many members of the public here, so I just wanted to kind of give a, some foresight for the way that the meeting is going to go today. We have some items that are, you know, imperative for the start of the school year, and so typically with our COW agenda meetings, we have a set of public comments upfront that is related to agenda items only. And, you know, the agenda is posted as stated in my meeting notice. There's a second set of public comments that's able to be used for any comment that you would like to make towards the Board of Education tonight. And every person will have, you know, three minutes to speak, as well as be able to list their, their address, and we'll just put a timer that way. And so that's, that's how the meeting will run tonight. We'll just take care of our business, and then everyone will have the opportunity to speak. And so welcome back to the school year. I will say that our first set of public comments for agenda items only is open at 7:23 PM. Everyone gets, again, three minutes to speak and just list your name and address, please. Seeing no comments from the public on agenda items, we have closed our public comment session number one at 7:24 PM. Can I have a motion to discuss items G1 through G24? All right, Ms. Calvez, seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Are there any comments or questions regarding items G1 through G24? Barring no comments, are we able to, to take roll?
Ms. Calvez.
Yes.
Ms. Carisola.
Yes.
Ms. Carr.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Hayward.
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Rundell.
Yes.
Dr. Robinson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to discuss the business items B1 through B18? Ms. Calvez, seconded by Mr. Hayward. Are there any items for discussion? Yes, Ms. Carr.
I wanted to thank Dr. Charleston for the weekly update, and then I had questions, and then other people had questions, so I saw the answer to it. Originally, when I sent my questions, I said I was going to vote no on B13, 14, and 15. That is absolutely wrong. But I am updating it to I will be abstaining on B14, 15, and 16, which pertain to the dual-use rule. So 14, 15, and 16, I will be abstaining.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Any additional comments? Ms. Scarpelli.
Yeah, I'm going to be abstaining on B5, 6, 7, 8, and 9.
Noted. Ms. Stevenson.
I'm also abstaining on B14, 15, and 16.
Noted. Can we please call roll?
Ms. Calvez.
Yes.
Ms. Carisola.
Yes.
Ms. Carr.
Yes, except as noted.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Hayward.
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Yes, except as noted.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes, except as noted.
Ms. Rundell.
Yes.
Dr. Robinson.
Yes.
All pass.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to discuss items P1 through P43? Ms. Scarpelli, seconded by Mr. Corey. Are there any discussion items for P1 through P43? And then I'll read. You're going to read it? Okay. No discussion? All right.
All right, so for, we had two hand-carry resolutions. They're a little long, but for P42, whereas a recommendation to withhold the employment and adjustment increments of employee number 045896 was presented to the Board of Education by the superintendent, whereas the employee was provided an opportunity to be heard on the superintendent's recommendation, and whereas there exists good cause for withholding the employee's increments, be resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes withholding the employment and adjustment increments for employee number 045896 for the 2024-2025 school year, be further resolved that the Board Secretary is directed to provide the employee with notice of the Board of Education's decision, together with the reasons for withholding of the increments. For P43, whereas a recommendation to withhold the employment and adjustment increments of employee number 041548 was presented to the Board of Education by the superintendent, whereas the employee was provided an opportunity to be heard on the superintendent's recommendation, and whereas there exists good cause for withholding the employee's increments, be resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes withholding the employment and adjustment increments for employee number 041548 for the 2024-2025 school year, be further resolved that the Board Secretary is directed to provide the employee with notice of the Board of Education's decision, together with the reasons for the withholding of the increments.
Thank you. Ms. Scarpelli.
Because I was not here during the executive session regarding P42 and P43, I will be abstaining.
Thank you, understood. All right. Are you able to call roll, Mr. Canales?
Ms. Calvez.
Yes.
Ms. Carisola.
Yes.
Ms. Carr.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Hayward.
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Yes, except as noted.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Rundell.
Yes.
Dr. Robinson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That moves us to our HIB resolutions, and we have two on the agenda. The first one is motion to affirm the decision made in the CENT HIB 267618 as reported by the Chief School Administrator during the June 24 close work session meeting. If you're able to call roll. Oh, we need a motion to, a motion to affirm it. Just need a motion to affirm. Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Mr. Hayward, and now we can call roll.
Ms. Calvez.
Abstain.
Ms. Carisola.
Abstain.
Ms. Carr.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Hayward.
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Rundell.
Yes.
Dr. Robinson.
Yes.
If I may, before we finish, just, all right? For Ms. Calvez and Ms. Carisola, the first one, you're not conflicted in any way, so you can vote on the central HIB. It's the second one that you would abstain from, so I'll give you the opportunity if you wanted to change your vote.
I'd like to change.
Understood.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, on our second HIB, I need a motion to affirm the decision made in the GRMS HIB 267518 after conducting a hearing at the request of the parent as reported to the Chief School Administrator during our June 24, 2024 close session meeting. Mr. Hayward, seconded by Ms. Stevenson, if you could call roll, please.
Ms. Calvez.
Abstain.
Ms. Carisola.
Abstain.
Ms. Carr.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Hayward.
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Rundell.
Yes.
Dr. Robinson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we are opening up our public comments, the second session of public comments in our COW meeting. We're opening at 7:32. If you're able to, please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Mr. Canales is able to be our timekeeper, so if you hear an alarm, please wrap up your comments, just to be able to give everyone an opportunity to speak. Typically, our public comment sessions are 20 minutes long. So if the time approaches, we'll be able to have one motion that will be put out to the Board for, you know, one extension, to be able to have other people speak that, if they choose to. Are there any questions from the Board members about that? Okay, all right. So first person, please step up to the podium and state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Mike Daley, 30 Brookfield Avenue. I want to thank the Board and the Administration, giving us the opportunity to speak tonight about the Glen Rock Hockey Co-op. I'm sure it's been a discussion. I'm sure you've heard about it. I've sent numerous correspondence to the Board and to the administrators. I'm glad I only have three minutes, because I could probably spend about five hours talking about it. There's some really key facts here, I think, that were overlooked during this whole process. Number one, the most important fact is, we do have the numbers to have a standalone varsity hockey team next year and for the next two to three years. In fact, our numbers are pretty robust. Other than the sixth grade, our numbers look fantastic going way back to the fifth grade. It was highlighted in a July 24 call with Frank Vialante and the principal that we were short on numbers and wouldn't be able to field the team this year unless we co-op with Tenafly. The dialogue between myself, Glen Rock Hockey Association, and the administrators has really not been a two-way street. It's been mostly one way, and that's Glen Rock has made the decision, as the Administration has made the decision, to go ahead with a co-op, and that's it. We're going forward with it. You know, it was a little disappointing to hear that, knowing that the key stakeholders, the students, the parents, and Glen Rock Hockey Association have never been contacted about this until July 24, when we woke up and realized that all of a sudden we're going to be part of Tenafly, and that everything had changed for our boys and girls. And I think an important point to make is, I do coach at a co-op. I coach for Indian Hills-Ramsey, and I've been a part of this process. I've been a part of the beginning of the process when Indian Hills was looking for a partner, and Ramsey was looking for a partner. And it was honestly probably about a two-year process that took place. All the parents were involved, all the students were involved. The athletic director called in, each player on, you know, for Indian Hills, each player came in, had a one-on-one interview with the athletic director to see what their thoughts were, to, you know, these kids play hockey. They know this game. They know the landscape very, very well. So they are the key stakeholder. We are just there as fans and parents to support them. So it was a little disappointing to hear that this process, you know, kind of in the cover of night, took place without anybody knowing about it until July 24. So it was very upsetting to hear. I think another key point to make is, why are we so late in this process? The deadline to file for a co-op was April 15 with the NJ. That has come and gone, and now we're in late August. And if we look at the schedule from the letter that Frank put out a week ago, we could be at the end of September and still not have an answer of what's going on with our varsity program. The kids don't have a coach currently. They have done really nothing since the last game of the season. My team, Indian Hills-Ramsey, we've played 18 games since the end of our season last year. We've been on the ice for six practices. We've conducted off-ice bonding team events. So, you know, looking at it as an outsider here in Glen Rock, knowing what I'm doing on the other side with Indian Hills and Ramsey, it's very discouraging that it has gone this way. I'll wrap it up with really the biggest and key fact is, we have the players, we have 17 players, and we have two very competitive goalies to have a varsity team for the next two to three years. And I think in that time, we should be evaluating for another partner, if that's something we need to do. And I don't know if we even need to do that for another four or five years. So those are just some of the points that I wanted to bring up before and ahead of the official, you know, agenda meeting, which I guess is going to be at the end of September. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. If you could just state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Am I allowed to give to you and Dr. Charleston just a piece of paper with the information on it to put in the record, or?
Sure, if you're able to just like flip it over, just to get, put it right there, and then I'll grab it up at the, thank you.
Hi. Adam and Allison Bloomfield, 69 Hillside Ave in Glen Rock. This is a very simple matter in our mind regarding the appeal of our son, who is an incoming junior, to advance from college prep US history to honors US history. Starting with the Glen Rock High School Program of Studies, the prerequisites for advancement from college prep to honors from one year to the next is a minimum grade of A- in the CP course and a teacher recommendation. Our son Will was placed for his sophomore year in US History I with teacher Brian McGoy. He had a successful academic year with a strong progression of grades from B+ to B+ to A-, to A, ending the year with a final grade of A- with teacher comments of active participant in class and good contributions to class for the marking period four in history. In addition, he achieved a high honor roll overall in marking period four. In March of 2024, on his own, without our involvement, as we have encouraged our children to do, to advocate for themselves, and with the desire to challenge himself for his junior year, he appealed for course-level advancement for the 24-25 academic year, and his appeal for advancement to honors US history to not AP, just one step up, was not approved by Lauren Danielle, Dr. Danielle, Director of Student Personnel Services, on April 17. On April 24, as suggested by Dr. Danielle in her rejection email, we helped Will approach Armando Morelli, who is the Social Studies Department Supervisor via email. He replied, "In consultation with Mr. McGoy and a review of Will's grades on major assessments, I agreed with Mr. McGoy's initial recommendation that Will would be..."
Just one second. I just asked for the future comments, and you'll get this time back. Just please don't mention names. I think that is confidential.
No problem.
Thank you.
In a review of his grades on major assessments, I agreed with the teacher's initial recommendation that he would be most successful in college prep US history two next year. His grades in social studies from ninth and 10th grade demonstrate growth, which should give him encouragement. May 2, we met with that supervisor. We met in person, where, again, our son's advancement to honors US history two was denied in what appeared to be a predetermined decision. At no point was there any discussion of his teacher's current assessment of his progress or of the prerequisites from the program of studies.
Nor did we see any of his work, his schoolwork.
Near the end of the-
We asked for it multiple times.
Near the end of the meeting, after pressing for specifics, the teacher, the supervisor stated he had concerns about his writing skills. No other significant obstacles to advancement were noted. In our son's own words, "At the meeting and after, I didn't know I was a bad writer." It was the first any of us had heard a single negative about his writing abilities throughout his entire career. He worked diligently to prove that he deserved to be challenged. He worked for and earned the above-mentioned A in the fourth marking period. Regarding his writing skills, his English grades this year were A+, A-, A, and A, and he finished the academic year with an A. He got a 660 as a sophomore on the SAT verbal. On July 24, we realized that we probably needed to get some input from his teacher. We spoke to his teacher, who enthusiastically and unequivocally recommended him for the honors course. And despite all of these appeals, demonstration of growth, our son's own desire for continued achievement, advancement, and challenge, he continues to be denied placement in the honors US history two class.
He meets your program of studies requirements. He has his grade, and he had the teacher recommendation.
This is a-
It's baffling.
This is a child who has done this on his own, and yet he is being told to be, while he's been told that he's not good enough.
It's very moralizing.
I know this is hard with regards to the time limits, and I know, you know, this is going to be a shared sentiment for this evening. So if I am, you know, cutting anyone short, it's not out of lack of respect for the issues that you're bringing to our attention today. But I really do ask that we try and abide by that time, because there are a lot, it allows everyone else to be heard as well. So if there are any additional comments that you feel like you weren't able to get out this evening, please do follow up with an email if you feel like there's additional evidence that you would like to submit to the Board. Thank you. Are we able to have our next public comment, please? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Bill Sanzoni, 26 Melvedere Road. My first question, is there any leftover pizza? Just kidding. I'm here about the Glen Rock Hockey Co-op, obviously. I've run the youth program for the past couple of years, through the elementary school to the middle school. The middle school level, our numbers are very strong. Like Mike said, we have an eighth grade, an incoming eighth grade class that has 10 players. At least eight or nine plan to matriculate through Glen Rock High School. At the seventh grade, there's probably another five to six really high-end skilled players. And at the sixth grade, we have another at least 10 players. That is a robust pipeline for the next three years. On top of that, what Mike said, for our program this year, our numbers, we have, I believe it's 22 players, and two of those are very high-end goaltenders. The thing about a co-op is the spirit of it. It's supposed to show a participation hardship, right? Like, I mean, you have 10 kids, you can't field a team. You have eight, you can't field a team, and you have another seven, so let's combine. I know for a fact that Tenafly alone has between 16 and 20 kids. And then when you take our 22 kids, I mean, under NJSIAA bylaws, Section 3, Article 7, a co-op has a max roster in a program of 30 players. So there's going to be a lot of kids who unnecessarily, unnecessarily, unnecessarily aren't going to be able to play high school hockey. And that's just not fair to me. I mean, you see these people show up tonight, and the Glen Rock Hockey Association and community is strong. It's a very grassroots sport, and we all, we all, we all stick together. So to tell these kids, when there's no need for a co-op, that, yeah, you may not have the chance to play hockey with all your friends you grew up with through elementary and junior high for the past eight years, that just seems really unfair to me, and I think there's a personal side to this that really has to be examined as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else, please?
Hi, my name is Mike Carlisle, 426 Prospect Street. Just to add to what these guys are saying, I've been involved with Glen Rock Hockey for about 15 years and wanted to just address the Board with some questions about the process, which seems a little bit backwards. According to the NJSIAA, the application cannot be submitted until the Board has reviewed it and approved it or disapproved it. Once that's done, then that application goes to the governing body. But you have to meet the guidelines, and in reading the guidelines, as Bill was just saying, you cannot use the co-op to be more competitive, which in this case, it looks like that will happen between the two schools with the numbers that become more competitive. You can only have a co-op if it's needed. And, and you can't use a co-op to get rid of a program. So there's a bunch of, it seems like there's a bunch of issues in there that Glen Rock ultimately does not qualify for a co-op. But the bigger concern is, with the letter that came from the AD, he said that there's going to be a meeting with the Big North tomorrow, and then next, in two weeks, he's meeting with the NJSIAA to see if they get approval. However, the application has not been, I believe, has not been put forward to the Board and hasn't been reviewed and hasn't been approved or disapproved. So it seems like he's missing a step, but then he says he's going to come back at the end of September for a resolution. But I believe a resolution would mean that had already been put in front of the Board. So, you know, in talking with a bunch of people, it's very confusing how this process is taking place. And what's even more confusing is, why wasn't it done April 15, when it was supposed to be done? Like, why wasn't Glen Rock able to make that happen? And in June, I believe June 4, the NJSIAA announced the 38 co-ops for the 24-25 season. And in their announcement, Tenafly is in a tri-op with Creoswell and Leonia, which goes through 2026. So I think as a citizen, it's very confusing how, why this process is happening this way, and why there's been no clarity on that. So I think, obviously puts Glen Rock in a very bad position, that if, if the proper procedure is followed, then it would mean the application would be in September, and you have to come back the following month for a resolution, which would then be October, and you're then 30 days away from the season. And if it doesn't go through, we believe you don't have a coach, because I believe Mr. Fernandez says he doesn't want to coach a full-time team. And you, I don't know if any ice has been secured. You know, typically, all these things will be happening. So for some reason, Glen Rock chose not to follow the proper schedule, and now this team is in a very bad position because the clock's ticking, and, you know, you just, you're going to be potentially resolving this 30 days before the season starts. So, thank you for your time. Just hopefully you guys will address that, and I would hope that you would all look at the NJSIAA policy and procedures, which I found online, and I think the community really deserves why they're not being followed. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Anne Marie Dunn, I live at 199 Pineland Road, and first, I just want to thank the board members. I know your job is very time-consuming and probably sometimes a thankless job, so I thank you for the dedication you have for the good of our children and our district. With that said, we just hope that you would look at all of the information that has been put forth, just some of the concerns and the facts that have already been stated, I won't repeat them, but I would just hope that you would truly take into consideration everything that we are sharing with you. We really do feel like this move to go ahead with the co-op would basically be handing over our players to Tenafly, that's how we feel, that's how it is perceived by us and by the players, and that is a concern. We have a very well-established program, we have one state championship, the boys are a tight-knit, solid group of really good kids, and they deserve to wear the Glen Rock jersey, and they deserve to represent their team, their school, so we really hope you will take that into consideration regardless of what information was shared with you before the parents and the players were informed of the co-op. Thank you very much, and again, thank you for your time and for your consideration. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Christina Kunto, I live at 72 Van Allen Road, and I'm a very proud hockey mom. I have a daughter that's a rising eighth grader who's a hockey player, and my son is also a rising junior and on the varsity team. So I just want to start by echoing everyone's sentiment, you know, we don't need to rehash all of the issues that are, that are going on with the hockey team this year that have already been discussed, but I just want to point out, you know, our children are students first, they're student athletes, and what are they learning in the classroom? What are we teaching them? We're teaching them to collaborate, we're teaching them to communicate, we're teaching them to plan ahead, we're teaching them to have, take in others' point of view, we're teaching them to have curiosity. I don't believe that the way that the athletic director has done this has modeled any of that for our kids, and I just think it's a shame because I think if he was curious about it, if he, if he called any of the kids in to speak to him about how we can move forward, get some ideas, it's like their coach left, and then they're completely untethered because they don't have a coach, they don't have a leader. We as parents are their voice now, we've been emailing you guys, we've been emailing the administrators, and, you know, we're, we're getting pushback because really, we understand, you don't, you don't want to just, you know, do what we want, but the, the athletic director has not responded personally to any of the kids' emails, has not discussed any of this with any of them, so that's my issue, is I think we need a leader, we need a coach. I don't know, our coach resigned in May, our season starts in November. Why has a coach, why has there not been an interview process for a coach? Why has a coach not been hired to try to help us, whether we have to co-op or whether we, we don't? We need a leader to lead us through this season, and we're, we don't have, one, we don't have a voice, our kids don't have a voice right now. The other issue is the ice time, so we're going from being able to play at the ice house full-time to now splitting between the ice house and an outdoor rink. It would almost be like telling the football team, the soccer team, the lacrosse team, "See these beautiful fields outside that we've spent thousands of dollars on? You guys can play half your games there, and then the other half, you can play at the old Faber Field with all the rocks and the divots and the, the danger." It's just the ice that they're suggesting to us at the outdoor rink is just not the same quality as the ice that we have at, at the ice house. So there's, there's just a lot of issues with moving forward with, with the co-op, but I do want to just stress that I would just love some leadership, someone that can, can really guide us, that can help us in the next few years and even help it, you know, our feeder program, and I, I don't know why it's taking so long to hire a coach. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Can I have a motion to extend the 20 minutes? All right, we have Mr. Hayward seconded by Ms. Stevenson.
Hello, my name's Lisa Farisi, 10 Berry Place. Thank you all for your ongoing commitment to Glen Rock and the town as a whole, and obviously academics are number one, but athletics are really important. As a mother of an incoming freshman and a senior boy who's on the hockey team, and hockey is his number one sport, since he was a little, little boy, he wanted to wear a Glen Rock jersey. It started when he was five, six years old, he's watched the team, he's become part of the team, and, you know, down the road, whether Glen Rock has to co-op or not, I think that's not the question, the question is what happens for this upcoming season. The decisions that were provided, or the information that was provided, I think was inaccurate in a lot of instances in terms of, number one, the head count, number two, the interest, number three, McKay, McKay's a terrible rink, and what no one's mentioned so far is that getting to McKay is actually a challenge. It's about 45 minutes, maybe further on 17 and four, traffic is really bad, none of the kids that play travel play home rink at McKay, so any of the kids that play travel are also going to have major complications trying to get to travel practices. When they're at the ice house, a lot of the kids can stay there, they can go to other rinks much more easily, but getting to and from McKay is a problem. The other part that I want to say is that Tenafly, when it came up, Tenafly's already, not only a co-op, it's a trial, they already have three schools, right? So I know that there may be some movement with some coming in and out, but these kids want to wear a Glen Rock jersey. They don't want to be Glenify, they don't want to be Tenrock, they want to wear Glen Rock. So the ask is that you guys keep Glen Rock as Glen Rock Hockey for this upcoming year, work with the kids, work with the parents, work with the Glen Rock Hockey Association to figure out what's in the best interest of Glen Rock, not what's in the best interest of Tenafly. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Megan Allman, 145 South Highwood Avenue. I'm a huge supporter of Glen Rock Hockey, we are a hockey family, I have a son going into eighth grade who plays hockey, I have a daughter going into junior year who plays hockey, and we're very linked into the New Jersey hockey community. I will tell you that Glen Rock Hockey has a great reputation, when we tell people our hockey friends in other areas that we're co-upping, they're shocked, they think, you know, we're known as one of, a great program, always has been. So first, I'd like to say, would like to keep us as an independent program this year, means a lot to the kids, it means a lot to everybody here, but the other thing I wanted to bring up tonight was communication. I think you've received feedback that there's been poor communication on this front, but the thing that's most concerning to me is the lack of communication with students. So in May of 2024, the NJSIAA approved ice hockey for women as a varsity sport in New Jersey. I'm not sure how many people are familiar with that, but my daughter who plays was very excited. I encouraged her to put together a whole proposal, she was talking to teachers, she was talking about her phys ed teacher who played ice hockey as a woman, and then getting a proposal together. So she put it together, reached out to the athletic director, the interim athletic director, and the principal of the high school. No one responded to her. Three weeks later, the principal responded to her and said, "I'll ask the athletic director and see." To this day, we haven't heard anything about it. She knew it was an uphill battle, it was probably very unlikely, and you hear with everything, go just to have a varsity hockey team, to get a girls' hockey team, it would probably be even harder, but the fact that someone who was inspired and curious and engaged didn't get any response was really disheartening to me. I just want to say that, I think with our kids, even if we don't think that something they want to do is possible, we should respond and at least give them guidance on how they can make their dreams come true. So, thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'm Brad Bisookie, I live at 18 Midwood Road, I'm also here on behalf of the parents of Glen Rock Hockey. I have two boys who've gone through the Glen Rock Hockey program, I've been a part of the program for about 10 years now, my older son is out of Glen Rock High School, my younger son is currently still in the program, and I just want to comment that this program means a tremendous amount to both my children, it's really been the most prideful and impactful experience they've had as part of Glen Rock High School, and they're honestly, both of them, I spoke to them, I can say on their behalf, they're crushed to hear that the program that meant so much to them is being essentially folded away. I know you can say that we're co-upping, and that's the same thing, but it truly isn't. Playing with your own classmates, the pride that they feel and what they do playing with one another, it can't be replicated with a co-op. We would understand if it was necessary and the only way to keep it alive, but as you've been told many times over by the other parents in the room, we can definitively say that the program can still live on as a unique town Glen Rock specific program. So with that in mind, like, what are we doing? Like, if the kids are adamantly opposed to it, and I think you're seeing that, like, there's unanimous opposition to the co-op among the families, among the players, we have the numbers, we have the will, we have the desire to keep the program going. This is so unique and so important to these kids, for my kids, for future generations of kids in the program, it should not be thrown away lightly, and we feel like that's what's happening here, it's being done hastily, as, as you can see by what other parents have said, we feel like it hasn't been communicated to us, and we feel like it's just been something that means so much to these kids, being let go and let trip away in such a cavalier way, it's very upsetting. We want to make the program work, we as a community are here to support it, but we hope you will appreciate how important it is to these families and keep it going as a unique, single Glen Rock soul program. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? All right. It is 8 o'clock, and I would like to close our second public comment session. Thank you again to everyone that came to express themselves today. I see no old business, our new business, our next meeting is September 9th, and at that, I just need a motion to close our public meeting. Ms. Carr seconded by Ms. Calvez. All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? None. All right. Thank you, everyone, again, today wasn't a, like, voting meeting, so it was our opportunity to hear you all out and add that for our, you know, deliberation. I appreciate it, thank you.